Good evening. Welcome to the September 8, 2016 Longview City Council Meeting is now called to order. Tonight, our prayer and pledge will be led by Pastor Bud Miller, Wesley McCabe, United Methodist Church. Please rise.
Mayor and council members, Wesley McCabe, we appreciate your service and your leadership on behalf of South Side and really all of Longview. It's an honor to be able to pray for you tonight in what you do. Let's pray. Almighty God, I thank you that you are our good shepherd. And Lord, we pray for your guidance, your leadership over our lives, over this meeting, over this city, Father God. Lord, we pray for peace. Lord, we pray for peace in our city. We pray for peace in our nation. And I thank you as we ask for that. We're asking the Prince of Peace for that, Father God. Give us wisdom in the way that we love each other and serve each other, Father God. Lord, I just pray your guidance over this. Thank you for these that serve. Bless their lives personally and then as a group, Father, as we seek to do your will and your purposes. Thank you, Lord, for your presence. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for your kind words, Pastor Miller. Tonight, during employee recognition, we're going to recognize the Finance Department. The Finance Division is responsible for the administration, the accounting of the city's financial affairs, which includes accounts payables and receivables, cash, investment and debt management, accounting of the city's fixed assets and capital improvements programs, coordination of an annual financial audit and preparation of the annual city budget. This involves the processing of over 29,000 invoices, depositing and recording over $76 million in revenue, managing investments of over $31 million, and preparing the annual city budget of over $154 million. Over the last 30 years, the Finance Division has received many awards, which include the GFOA Certificate of Achievement and Excellence in Financial Reporting for 27 years and the GFOA Certificate of Achievement for Budgeting for 28 years. Recently, the City of Longview was honored to be the recipient of the Platinum Texas Comptroller Leadership Circle Award for Usable Financial Transparency. The Finance Division includes Finance Director Angela Cohen, Finance Manager Kimberly Adams, Accounts Receivable and Payable Specialist Jessica Connor, Bianca Cummings, and Stephanie Ellis, Budget Accounting Angela Walker, Grant CIP Accounting Kara Clifton, and Utility Accountant Jeanette Jennings. Would you all please come forward? If I gotta be up here, you gotta be up here. I just want to take a moment to explain to you all, I know those numbers are numbers, but I can tell you, I had the privilege of going and meeting with these young ladies a couple of weeks ago, and I spent some time in the Finance Department as I'm trying to do with every department in the city, and I was overwhelmed at the volume that this group can produce. Did you catch that 29,000 number? That's in a year. It's crazy, and they do it, and their department is so happy, and they had such smiles on their face, and they genuinely looked like they were enjoying their jobs. Maybe it's just because I was there, I don't know, but to be honest, they didn't really know who I was. I just walked in and hear, hey, how y'all doing? But they're having such a good time with such a great attitude, and it shows by their performance. And I can tell you, from a city standpoint, when you have a group like this handling the numbers we talked about, 154-plus-million-dollar budget, these are the ladies that I want doing that for us. And so, I can tell you, Angela does a fantastic job watching over, but the attitude at our city is just getting better and better and better. And I can tell you, if you want to see that at work, come walk in the Finance Department any day of the week and you'll see it. So, I'm so pleased and proud of you ladies. Thank you for all that you all do, and we took a really great picture. Do you know how good it looks when I get to stand between all of these young ladies? It was fantastic. So, from the City of Longview, from all the residents, we thank you for a job well done. Thank you all. Now, we have to have a picture where I'm not in my work clothes. Thank you all so much. Appreciate y'all. It's time for citizens to comment. I have some speaker cards, but most of them are dealing with the zoning issues, so if it's okay, I will call you up during the public hearings unless you'd like to speak at this point in time. So, I'll call you at the public hearings. Thank you. Any other citizens to comment that did not fill out a speaker card? Very well. Public Safety Update. Chief Bishop.
Mayor Mack, council members, Mr. Willard, good evening. Just kind of give you a quick update for our August numbers. For last month, we responded to a little over 10,000 calls for service. 5,500 of those were dispatch calls and 4,800 were officer-initiated calls for service. We arrested 156 individuals, 20 felony arrests with 28 charges, and 149 misdemeanor arrests with a total of 305 charges. So, we had a busy month in August. Tuesday night, we had our National Night Out kickoff party. I want to thank everybody that came out. We had a great event, had over 350 people show up for the event. It was great to see the community come and begin to register for their National Night Out parties. I have a few pictures here of the event. Had a great turnout, and everybody had a good time, and I know everybody was asking that night what the results were, and that night, we had 59 block parties registered at the kickoff and then another 29 registered online. So, we have a total of 88 registered parties so far here in Longview. And I'd like to remind everybody that it is Tuesday, October 4th. It's not too late to register, and they can do that at longviewtexas.gov backslash NNO. And then, last council meeting, I talked to you about our interactive crime map and want to remind everybody that that's up and running, like them to go to longviewtexas.gov backslash crime map and check that out and see what's going on in your neighborhood. And that's all I have. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Any questions, council? Thank you, Chief Bishop.
Okay, thank you.
Chief Steelman.
Mayor Mack, members of council, Mr. Willard, thanks for the opportunity to share with you a few things that have been going on in the Fire Department since we last met. Midweek last week, we had the opportunity to officially promote 14 people in the Fire Department, and this was a very large group of promotions of people to promote due to some very tenured and senior ranking members of the Fire Department having retired out earlier in the year. So, the one thing, two things that I get to do that are really fun about my job is I get to hire people, and then I get to eventually promote them later on down the road, and it really makes me feel good because I see the future of the Fire Department in these people and know that we're going to be sustainable and that we're going to continue to move forward and provide the services that our citizens deserve. So, I have the highest expectation of this group of men and women that are out there serving us every day. Another fun thing that I got to participate in this week is every year since about 2010, the Fire Department and the Police Department have gotten together somewhere around 9/11, and we participated in a sporting golf tournament. I mean, there's some rivalry there a little bit in Fire and Police, and we get to go out and share a day to disassociate ourselves from work and go out and spend some time. And the thing, it's not so much about playing golf, but it's about having the relationship that we do between the Fire and Police Departments that is my big takeaway from this, because I have colleagues in other cities, and I promise you, it's not as good as we have it here in Longview. And I appreciate that, and being able to go out and have some fellowship with our brothers in blue and spending a day with them on the golf course, we had a great time. And the reason we were out there once again was that's kind of our little commemorative thing to the events of 9/11. So, we get together and we have a real good time doing this, and it's not really about who wins or loses, however, the Fire Department won this year. I just throw that out there. But it's about the camaraderie that goes on out there, and I promise you, it's things like this that carries forward and translates out into the street when we're out there working together. So, just a great opportunity. I want to give a quick shout out to Lieutenant Bowen in the Police Department and Lieutenant Catchman from the Fire Department, who are really the organizers of this force. And then, last but certainly not least, I just want to encourage the public once again to continue sending us information on our outstanding arson cases, and believe it or not, we are getting some tips. We're getting some good information that's trickling in, some leads to follow, so people are talking, and it really, it's really closing in some gaps for us. So, just continue to keep that up. No piece of information is too small, and we certainly appreciate the help. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Chief, I just want to say to both of you chiefs that you all put out such a concerted effort, and you all have solidified that relationship between police and fire, which is so important in our community, and that the citizens recognize that, and I think that's why we're getting more cooperation from the citizens, more tips, more calls, because they realize that you all are going to work together, and there's not going to be a division. And I appreciate the time that y'all spend and the camaraderie that comes from that. Thank you all both very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
We're now at the Consent Agenda. Are there any items council would like to pull off for separate discussion, i.e., one item?
Move to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent Agenda carries. Budget item. Consider an ordinance adopted the 2016 tax rate and levying said tax rate. Ms. Cohen.
Good evening. The property tax rate is recommended to be set at 38 cents for maintenance and operations, 12.99 cents for debt service, totaling 50.99 cents. This is not a tax rate increase, and it is, it does not exceed the effective rate, and I can answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions, Ms. Cohen? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And Ms. Cohen, thank you all once again for the wonderful job with this budget, Mr. Willard, everyone involved. Great job. We're now to zoning. We'll have a public hearing held to consider PD 16-09. Ms. Choi.
Thank you, Mayor Mack, members of council, and Mr. Willard. The City of Longview is requesting a rezone of approximately 38 acres of abstract 258 PP Rain Survey Tract 11, Section 4, from Agriculture A to Plan Development General Retail located at the northwest corner of Eastman Road and Hawkins Parkway, also known as Hensley Park. The city held an election to allow citizens to vote to remove the park designation from Hensley Park. The citizens approved the removal of this park designation last year, as you recall, to ensure proper development occurs on this site and to ensure that the potential developers build what was promised to the citizens of Longview. The City of Longview is proposing to rezone this property to Plan Development. The Plan Development Site Plan does propose a list of permitted general retail uses, as seen in your staff report. Due to the discussion at the Planning and Zoning Meeting regarding the uses, staff did further refine the uses in that list. The maximum square footage, total building square footage for this area is for, it will be 425,000 square feet with a single tenant maximum square footage of 130,000 square feet. Building height shall not exceed two stories, not to exceed 50 feet in height, including unoccupied architectural elements such as parapets and cornices. The building front setback shall be 50 feet along Eastman Road with a side setback of 20 feet along Hawkins and 4th Street, with a rear setback of 25 feet along the west property line. For the out parcels, the setbacks will be 50 feet along Eastman Road with 25 feet along Hawkins Parkway and a five-foot side setback and 10 feet in the rear. Signage for the proposed development will be two pylon signs along Eastman Road to be shared by all the tenants within the development. The two pylon signs will not exceed 40 feet in height, 400 square feet in size, and will have a 15-foot minimum setback. One pylon sign will be allowed along Hawkins Parkway that will be shared by all of the tenants. This pylon sign will not exceed 35 feet in height, 300 square feet in size with a 15-foot setback. Monument signs will be allowed for all the out parcels and not exceed 12 feet in height, 150 square feet in size with a 15-foot setback. If a monument sign is shared by two out parcels, the height will not exceed 15 feet in height with a 225 square feet maximum with a 15-foot setback. This development will have a green belt along Eastman Road that will be 30 feet wide at minimum. The green belt will traverse the pipeline easement after discussion with the city engineer, traffic engineer, and the Director of Public Works. It is stated that a full driveway was provided onto Hawkins Parkway, and a center turn lane would be required if a full driveway is proposed. With the creation of a center turn lane, no additional right-of-way would be required since they would fit the center turn lane within the existing right-of-way. However, a 20-foot green belt will be preserved along Hawkins Parkway. Five trees per 100 linear feet will be provided within both green belts along Eastman Road and Hawkins Parkway. One landscape island will be required for every 25 parking spaces. Each landscape island will be approximately 150 square feet in size. Every effort will be made for each parcel to have 10% landscaping. However, the whole site will be 10% landscaped at a minimum, which meets the City of Longview requirements. Also, every effort will be made to preserve existing trees. Within the green belt, there will be an eight-foot wide pedestrian path that will connect to a pond on-site, seen here at the corner. The path will be constructed of a combination of decomposed crushed granite and concrete along Hawkins, along Eastman Road, and will be concrete along Hawkins Parkway. The retention pond that will be provided will meet all of City of Longview codes, FEMA, and all other codes. A courtyard area will be provided and will include a public space with tables and landscaping. For this development, the parking ratio will be one parking space for every 225 square feet of gross floor area within this development, and there will also be shared parking throughout the whole site. A 5,000-square-feet public area also will be included for the customers. No temporary or permanent outdoor storage will be allowed within this development, or no permanent outdoor storage will be allowed in this development. Temporary outdoor display will be allowed but cannot exceed 20% of the total floor area display and must be located directly adjacent to the primary storefront. Also, the temporary outdoor display will only be permitted during regular hours. Traditionally, Plan Development's are site plan-specific, however, to ensure that development occurs properly on this sensitive site, staff felt that the Plan Development was the most appropriate way to accomplish this. Staff has attempted to make these guidelines as flexible without compromising development standards within our community. As development occurs on this site, the developer will not be required to submit an amendment to this Plan Development as long as they meet the guidelines set forth within this development. Besides the plan, besides the guidelines within the Plan Development, this development will also meet all other City of Longview codes. Eastman Road is a principal arterial, and Hawkins is a minor arterial, which is appropriate for this type of use as long as access management is followed. Driveways on this site plan are only a graphical representation for this zoning case. Traffic signals, driveways, and locations of both will be determined by a traffic impact analysis approved by our city engineer and traffic engineer, along with text dot. Planning and Zoning Commission and staff recommend approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This does require a public hearing. I have one speaker card. Ms. Sandy Ariza.
Thank you, Mayor Mack. Good evening, city council members, Mr. Willard. My name is Sandy Ariza. I'm a constituent from District 4, and I'm on the Community Advisory Board for the Hensley Crossing Project, but I also moderate a group on Facebook called Livable Longview, and on that page, we discuss ways that Longview can maintain its appeal and even improve. So, I'm here tonight representing that group. One thing we talk a lot about is our pine trees and how valuable they are, not just for beautifying our city, but also how valuable they are for businesses. Studies show that trees and landscaping, the more trees and landscaping a business has, the more business will flow into those companies. So, for the benefit of the development and for the benefit of our entire community, we ask that the developers are required to preserve as much of the natural vegetation as possible. That is our first request, that instead of clearcutting, the developer will conserve as much of our natural piney woods as possible, and as Ms. Choi just stated, that is their plan. Now, with all the wet weather we've had this year, flooding has frequently been a topic of conversation on this page, and our next two requests are concerned with runoff. First, we ask that the city require an environmental impact study from a third-party independent engineer with a report to be approved by the city council before beginning construction. Also, we ask that the city require the use of green infrastructure. This would be things like permeable pavements, green roofs, infiltration planters, grain gardens, and other systems that will absorb more rainwater before it becomes runoff. And as shown on this document, they have a retention pond. That's great. Maybe they can do even more, since we're having a problem with that in our city this year. Finally, we just make the plea that the developer will follow the comprehensive plan that our city worked so hard to formulate. The items in the comprehensive plan are not yet ordinances, so the developer is not obliged to follow them, but we ask that this developer recognize that that document represents the will of the citizens of Longview and gives a vivid description of the kind of city that the residents of Longview want to live in. So, to recap, we're asking for preservation of the natural vegetation, a third-party independent environmental impact study, the use of green infrastructure, and adherence to the comprehensive plan. And that is all we had. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ariza. Sorry for mispronouncing your name.
That's okay.
I have no more speaker cards on this subject. Council, any discussion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We now have a public hearing to consider application of S. 16-03. Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting a specific use permit for a restaurant with a private club in general retail zoning district. A specific use permit is required for a private club allowing onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages in addition to beer and wine within general retail zoning district to ensure no negative impact on surrounding properties. The proposed restaurant is located in general retail zoning district, and there is no adjacent residential near it. Staff finds that the proposed SUP is consistent with the future land use map and surrounding land use. Planning and zoning and staff recommend approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This does require a public hearing, which is now open. I have no speaker cards. Council, any discussion? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We will now have a public hearing to consider application S. 16-04. Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting a specific use permit for a restaurant, for a restaurant with private club in general retail zoning district. As stated previously, a specific use permit is required for a restaurant with a private club allowing onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages in addition to beer and wine within general retail zoning district to ensure no negative impact on surrounding properties. The proposed restaurant is located in a general retail area. There is no adjacent residential near it. Planning and zoning and staff recommend approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing. Public hearing is now open. I have a speaker card.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Willard, council members. I'm Lane Edwards. I am the Director of Licensing at CEC Entertainment in Irving, Texas. We have several locations throughout the state of Texas. I believe we're up to 66. Of those, 55 do serve beer and wine, and the other locations that we do not have license for are prohibited by local ordinance. Chuck has been around for about 40 years now. It's hard to imagine that we've had so many children pass through our doors, but what a lot of people have not been aware of is they've always served beer, and we are now extending the option of the menu to offer wine as well. Chuck has expanded throughout the United States. We have 525 locations now. We have 75 franchise locations, and we are in 12 foreign countries. Most of those locations do serve beer and wine. We do not anticipate becoming anything more than the family restaurant we are now. We are merely offering additional menu options to those young millennial couples who are now having their children and want to come into a Chuck and have their children play while dad has a beer with his pizza and he can watch the game. Do you have any questions for me?
No, ma'am. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
There, do you have another speaker? Would you like to speak?
Yes, sir.
Would you please fill out speaker card? We're through. Thank you. Please come forward.
Good evening, council. I would like to speak.
State your name, please.
Megan Tyler.
Thank you.
Sorry, from District 6.
Got you.
I've been living in Longview my entire life. I am a young millennial, and I passed through Chuck E. Cheese's doors when I was a kid as much as probably anyone else. I've never seen alcohol served there. I could be wrong and just missed it, but I do not agree with the extension of these menu options because we, this is for kids, and I would like it to stay for kids. I feel like there are plenty of places to drink in Longview if I choose to go do that. It's my business. There's plenty of social clubs, clubs, other menu places, including even right next door that the parents could go drink at afterwards or go have a meal pizza is served there. I feel like Chuck E. Cheese's is centered and focused solely on kids, and beer, wine, or anything else, so it's not focused on children. I feel like that Chuck E. Cheese's should stay child-oriented. If you choose to go drink, it should not be around your children in that type of environment when it's other kids there, too. Anything could possibly happen when you get that type of environment with children. So, I personally would like to just separate that, and I disagree with this permit that they're trying to get, and would like you guys to consider not doing it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other speaker cards? Anyone else have to speak? Council, any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Pertle.
I don't agree with it.
Okay.
I feel like it is a children's place. I've taken my grandchildren kids there, and I've been in there twice this week. Very few adults, I mean, they're in there with their kids. We've had birthday parties there. I just don't see it as being a real conducive setting to serve beer and wine or mixed beverages. And on top of that, the SUP follows the building, whether it's sold forever and ever. So, if someone wants to sell that, Chuck E. Cheese wants to sell it out in the near future, it automatically has a liquor license with it. I think that needs to be the option that comes back before Planning and Zoning and the board again in the future. So, I'm opposed to it at this point. I just don't see any need in it myself, and it's like Megan said, if someone wants to go drink, that's more of a game place for young kids, five, six, seven, eight years old. I can see potential problems of people sitting there eating and leaving a glass of wine or a cup of beer there and some little child walking up there and swinging it, thinking it's a Coke or something. I just can't support it.
Anyone else?
Let me have a question and clarify. They can serve beer now?
Yes, sir. Right now, they could serve beer and wine. The issue is that TABC won't allow them to have a beer and wine license. They actually applied for a beer and wine license, and staff did sign off on that, but because their gaming exceeds food sales, they're required to get a mixed beverage license. And so, therefore, because they're required to get a mixed beverage license, they're required to go through the specific use permit process. Now, if Mr. Pertle, you know, if you are concerned, there is a way, you know, it does go with the land, but you can put an expiration date on a specific use permit. There is that possibility to do that if you are concerned about that.
To clarify, so it does not travel with the next owner?
It does. The SUP, so they'll have to go back through the TABC process if a new owner goes into that facility. However, you could, for the zoning, for the specific use permit, you could put an expiration date for their SUP.
Angela, can we put, say, one year on it and see how it works and then come back and revisit it?
Yes, sir. You certainly can. Yes, sir.
Or you could also put a date on it that expires with the sale of the building.
Yes, sir. We could do that as well.
But that would take a motion. But that would take a motion.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? Public hearing is now closed. Is there any motions?
I'd like to offer a motion that we approve the SUP with the one-year clause of expiration for the sale of beer and wine. Is that correct?
It can have alcohol to, not just beer and wine.
So I need to amend it. Okay. I'd like to offer a motion that we approve the SUP for the noted location with the expiration date to expire at the time that business moves.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a second?
Can I amend? I'd like to, the way you had it with one year originally, because then we can get a report, and if everything's going well, then we can...
Are we in discussion?
Hold on. First, we have to see is there going to be a second to this motion?
Okay.
There will be a second.
Second?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Now we can discuss.
I was wondering if you would accept an amendment to yours that it would be for one year, so we can see how it works out after a year, and then if there's no issues, then we can go with the rest of your motion.
While I respect your request, I have to say that I think that given what the information that the lady from the franchises brought us from Irving, the number of locations that they're already doing this and operating as such, I don't think that they would require policing or report in one year. That's just my personal thought.
Well, who's going to police this?
I didn't know. We had people that policed our restaurants.
That's TABC's job.
That's TABC.
Now, what other locations in this area do not have that license?
I don't know specifically, but I know there are some in Houston and Dallas and...
Tyler doesn't have it. They don't serve alcohol, the one in Tyler.
Most of the locations are in Houston and in Dallas, and it's done by a neighborhood area, because as you know, Texas is part wet, part dry. Okay? If I can add a couple of things that you may or may not be aware of. All of our servers who are 18 years and older, all of our management, they are qualified through TABC server certification. Texas is a voluntary state. Our corporate office mandates that they have to go through TABC training. We also have our own corporate in-house training that we do for the servers and the GMs and the district managers as well. Corporate has also instituted and has maintained a two-drink maximum per person that stands. It doesn't matter if you go to a Chuck here in Longview and you drive two hours to another Chuck and you try to have a drink, you can't. We are instituting, we have partnered with a company called WeScan. WeScan has the ability to scan IDs, student IDs, driver's licenses, passports, military IDs. Anything that has a MAG card stripe or a barcode, they can tell you the age to sell. They can confirm whether or not there is fraud involved, and they can also track the individual in the system to a two-drink maximum in a 24-hour period.
Thank you.
Anything else?
May I just add something else, Mayor?
You may.
One of the things that I know we've been seriously considering is our development and the processes thereof. And I think that if we're going to encourage, because we're happy to have Chuck E. Cheese's in town, as with other restaurants and franchises and so forth, and if staff has recommended this approval, that is why I think that this is something that will be okay, because it's not brand-new.
Right.
And just because Tyler maybe chose not to, Tyler was also dry for a very long time. We are not Tyler.
Correct.
We are Longview.
Correct.
So I just wanted to put that out there so that no one gets confused about why I'm thinking this way, because at the end of the day, our job as council members is to ensure that we're continuing to bring revenue into the city.
Our most recent liquor licenses that were approved just in the last two to three weeks was Wichita Falls, Midland, Waco. So we feel that we have been a very good corporate citizen. We do try to take care and acknowledge the fact that we have children in our restaurants. That's why we have Kid Check. So we do try our best to provide the best training and for our staff to run the business the way it should be run. Our revenue sales are very small in comparison to our restaurant and the kids' games. So, you know, we're not going to turn into a bar.
Right.
We're just merely trying to offer some additional menu items.
Thank you. Ms. Choi. Please clarify that what I'm saying is correct. If their percentages weren't, their sales weren't higher in the gaming than they are in the restaurant, they wouldn't even need this, correct?
Yes, sir.
They have the ability to do it right now. If they wanted to cut their gaming back, they wouldn't even come before our council, correct?
That is correct.
So that is true.
Yes, sir.
So, okay, that's all I'm saying.
And one more question, Ms. Choi. I did not watch the video of P&amp;Z, but did discussion along this line take place at that meeting also?
Yes, sir, it did.
And it passed 9-0?
Yes, sir, it did.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? We have a motion before the council and a second for approval of this with expiration at the time the building is sold. That is the motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Choi. Okay. We have now a public hearing to consider Z-16-02.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting a rezone from SF4, single-family, to heavy commercial. The applicant owns the property to the south, seen here in the red. That property is zoned heavy commercial. They would like to expand their business to the north, to that adjacent property that they do own. Judson Road is a principal arterial, which is appropriate for commercial-type use as long as access management is followed. Planning and zoning commission, along with staff, recommend approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open. I have no speaker cards. Any discussion, council? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Public hearing to consider M-16-04. Ms. Choi.
Thank you. This is a request to amend the City of Longview future land use map from retail to medium-density residential. The future land use map is intended to serve as a guide in establishing appropriate mixes and intensities of land use throughout the city. It is not intended of the future land use map to identify exact uses on a parcel-to-parcel basis. Furthermore, it is not a zoning map. However, it does have a close relationship with the zoning map in that it is used in part to determine the appropriateness of zoning requests. The future land use map must remain flexible, being changed and updated to meet new policies and changes in development trends and patterns. Upon the request of Councilmember Pertle, staff is requesting to reclassify the area at the northeast corner of HG Mosley and McCann Road from retail to medium-density residential. As you can see on the future land use, medium-density residential surrounds this property, and therefore, it is appropriate to amend this map. It was rumored that a big-box retailer was interested in the site for redevelopment, and a petition began circulating throughout the area. Staff has received that petition with over 1,500 signatures against the redevelopment of this site into retail. HG Mosley and McCann Road are minor arterial roads, which are appropriate for this type of residential use. Planning and zoning commission, along with staff, recommend approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This does require a public hearing, which is now open. I have a speaker card. Ms. Diana Sherman.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor Mack, council member, especially Steve Pertle from District 6, which is, has placed this request, and Mr. Willard. I am Diana Sherman, President of the North Central Neighborhoods United. We are a Texas unincorporated nonprofit association, which was created on January the 4th, 2016, for the sole purpose of protecting the integrity of our neighborhood, residential neighborhood areas. I am a resident and homeowner in close proximity to the note of property under discussion, and without maybe too much disturbance, we have quite a representation of other people that are here from this same area. I think it important to clarify the facts with respect to this note, as was defined by the future land use plan submitted in March 2015. It was earmarked for potential change if requested and approved from residential to commercial. This property has been part of the Longview Christian Church, and before that, of at least one other church for over 40 years. The node in question, the little purple area is what we're referring to, comprises only about one-third of the church's total property. The property is not adjacent to other commercial uses. Quite to the contrary, it is adjacent to a number of residential neighborhoods that are largely unanimous in their opposition to commercial development of the property on which Longview Christian Church sits. The proposed developer of the property, which gave rise to the recent desire of the neighbors to change this node back to residential, was Walmart. Walmart wanted to build a store covering the entire church property, not just the partial issue. In order for Walmart to build its store on the property, they would have to rezone the entire church property. I have been involved in opposing the efforts of Walmart to rezone the church property and build a store in the middle of several residential neighborhoods in which virtually all of the potentially affected residents oppose the development. Our neighborhood association is certainly not opposed to commercial development in Longview, but we do oppose the proposed Walmart venture, and we desire to return this node to its original residential status. One's residence is typically the largest investment of most individuals. Preserving the value of that investment is an imperative of our neighborhood homeowners. We believe that approving the request of P&amp;Z to amend this node back to residential would further that objective. Finally, City Councilman Steve Pertle should be applauded for doing what an elected official is supposed to do, which is listen to his or her constituents, and when he or she concludes that their complaints, to act in a manner accordingly. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Sherman. Any other discussion on this? Any other speaker cards? Council, public hearing is now closed. May I have a motion?
Make a motion. Be approved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have an action item. Consider, go ahead, it's okay. Consider a resolution to approve the Longview Economic Development Corporation 2016-2017 budget. Mr. Wayne Mansfield.
Appreciate the opportunity to be before y'all this evening and try to move through this pretty quickly, if I can navigate this. What you see before the budget's really a result, and let me go ahead and give the disclaimer, that I've been on the job since August 1st. A lot of the work going into this budget was done by the LEEDCO staff and the LEEDCO Board specifically, and I really, really want to thank them, and I'll tell you, too, we've got an incredibly active and engaged LEEDCO Board and a very capable and engaged LEEDCO workforce with the ladies there. So I really appreciate all of their efforts in trying to get this put together. What you'll see in the budget here is really based on a strategy focused around job creation. That's our number-one goal. And we do that in a, really, a three- or four-pronged effort in maintaining the relationships and partnerships in retail and talent, and I'll discuss that a little bit more in detail. Emphasis on business park development and improvement in supporting existing industry and business and recruiting new business and industry here to Longview. And you'll look and see that the 18% of general and administrative, the remainder of the budget, 72% of our budget is focused on this strategy. So we're really, really emphasizing this effort. On the revenue, I think it speaks for itself. Go ahead and say, you know, ask everyone to shop and buy locally. We always hear that. In fact, from the city I came from before, that's always the mantra. But one of the things that we're looking at, too, is trying to create new revenue potential. In looking at the business parks, especially Longview Business Park, we have a lot of tree growth. And driving around, I said, you know, it's kind of hard for a developer or a site consultant to actually see what's on the ground. Maybe we need to engage a forester and look at doing a select timber cut, which could be additional revenue, maybe even engage in developing a timber management plan. And I do have experience in doing that. So that's something that I think we'll consider, and it'll really serve the purpose of, one, creating potential revenue for LEEDCO, and also opening up the area for site developers The programs and projects is really the main focus of our economic development efforts. Most of our activities are centered around here. In industry, you'll see that we've got an increase in that effort. That includes promotion, lead generation, recruitment, as well as working with our existing industries. I can tell you, in a month's time, we've met with probably 40 or so companies, industries here. Just kind of very off course here, I do want to say, during those visits, the message that we're receiving is very positive. And I know everyone talks about the downturn in the economy, especially in the petroleum industry, but all of the industries that we're visiting, at the bare minimum, they're maintaining, they're not struggling, and some are looking at future expansions. And I can tell you that with the recent acquisition, Joy Global, from a combined effort of Nucor and Komatsu, and meeting with them, there will be some exciting things coming down the road for Longview. And I do have a history of working with Nucor. I know some of their people that, in the Jackson, Mississippi area. And I do know what they're capable of doing. So I think there's some exciting times coming ahead for Longview as these companies develop their strategies. Last week, I was in Atlanta with Team Texas, which is kind of a combination, an organization of all the economic development people in the state of Texas. It was really, again, a two-pronged effort on my part, was, one, to get to know some of my colleagues in the state of Texas. As y'all know, I came from Mississippi. But also reconnect with some consultants that I've worked with previously, who had no idea I'd come west. And we had some incredibly outstanding visits. One, from the standpoint that the consultants that I've worked with in the past were excited to know that I was in Texas. They gave glowing reports on working with Texas in general, a very business-friendly state. And then also good reports from them at what they're seeing on the road ahead and the projects that they anticipate bringing. And one thing that they really, all of the consultants we met with stressed was that there is a lot of foreign direct investment coming into the country right now, even more so than domestic expansions. So I think that that's something we need to be cognizant of as we move forward. Certainly, Komatsu's one example, just one example of that, and there are others. But like I said, I think there's going to be some great opportunities as we move down the road to the future. On the retail side of it, you'll see a decrease there, but that's a result, a lot of, some of the retail studies that we've done in the past are being concluded, and we certainly can make that information available if so desired. The talent effort has been, I know it looks like a huge decrease, but that's actually been consolidated. And we've been meeting with Kilgore Community College, both here and in Kilgore, with Dean Fowler and Dr. Kays, and looking at working with the school districts and trying to consolidate some things. Therefore, there's not a duplication of efforts. They're very willing. Workforce development is a very critical part of economic development. And I can tell you, again, in these industry visits, we get very positive reports from the plant managers, from the HR people, that their workforce is very good here. Entrepreneurship, that's the Small Business Development Center we will continue to work with. And then the 4B projects, as y'all are aware of, in 4B, LEEDCO can contribute the money for the various infrastructure-type or quality-of-life-type projects. In the past, I think LEEDCO has made some contributions to the Small Area Plan, to Unified Code Development. David, please correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm still learning on the fly. The transportation system... The transportation system. And then this year, I think we have the last payment for George Ritchie. Is that correct? And then last year was Mickey Melton in the North Business Park. We, moving forward on contribution to the trails, I think that was a result of the comprehensive plan that's been discussed here earlier this evening. From what I understand, I've not had a chance to review the plan, but I understand that development of those trails was a number-two issue. And all of these things, trails, recreation areas, those add to the quality of life for a community, and that's a significant component to marketing your community for economic development projects. In fact, when we were working with the recent announcement of a nation star, one of the trails comes right behind where they will locate their triple creek, and they were really excited to hear that. General and administrative, personnel and benefits, you'll see just a small decrease, but what's important to know is that previous staff included a number of ten, and we're down to seven positions and do not anticipate any additional at this, at this time going forward. So decrease in staff and a decrease in the amount there. So we're still getting the same amount of work done, and I think that speaks to the productivity of the ladies there in the office. Office expenses, what we did in looking at past budget, there is a pretty good decrease there, but what we did was actually budget what was actually spent last year. You know, in office expenses, the financial people can tell you a lot better than I can, that's something that you really don't anticipate huge swings in going forward. And then professional services, we're looking at completing the rail study and, in marketing In the business parks, and this is part of our, another big part of our overall strategy, the maintenance agreements, you'll see the decrease there. We actually have renegotiated the degree, maintenance agreements. That includes your lawn maintenance, bush hogging, things of that nature. And then you'll see the George Ritchie extension there. Debt service funds, I think what's anticipated, that we're looking to refinance that here coming forward, which will help some savings. I believe our debt service is carried out through 2024. And then capital fund allocations, real property, you'll see an increase of $300,000. One of the things that site selectors that I've worked with in the past and utility companies too, look at is, they've moved from this thing of certified sites into qualified sites. And that's actually having a pad-ready site. In, in the old days of economic development, you could spend months communicating with a company and it'd take years. Now, everything is, I want it now. It's electronic, and they come to a community and they want to see a site ready to go because if you're not, the community down the road is ready to go. And I can tell you, there's a stat, Conway Data puts out a lot of economic development stats, and you can Google them, it's really interesting data. But any community in any given year has less than a .05 percent chance of landing a new business. That's not very good odds. So what we try to do is create a competitive advantage for Longview and get ourselves in, I had a site selector tell me one time, and I try to hold to this, is, you know, we're not, he said, "We're not site selectors, we're site eliminators." So what we're trying to do is position Longview to be the last one standing. And development of the, of real property there, having a site pad-ready, we've explored the parks, we've talked with some engineers, and we've developed a strategy on that and we'll begin moving forward there. Office and furniture and fixtures, equipment, it speaks for itself. And then the final part is the incentives, and you'll see a little less than a million dollars will be put in our incentive bucket. And a word on that, we've got about, we're committed or allocated up to about $6 million over the next four years for various projects ongoing, and we'll anticipate some more. In fact, I think we're going to have, hopefully have, an announcement here very soon on another project. And, but it still leaves us with upwards of 16 million to contribute to incentive programs to try to lure industry here, industry and business to Longview. I think that's about all of our presentation here, and I went through pretty quickly, but I would certainly be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions, Mr. Mansfield?
Yes, ma'am.
Comment and a question. First of all, thank you for your presentation. I have to acknowledge that is probably the most detailed Leadco budget presentation I've heard since I've been in this chair. So thank you. Secondly, thank you to you, Ms. Vaughn, and your staff for your contribution to our 4B projects. I just can't say it enough. That is how the city and Longview Economic Development Corporation should work together. I do have one little question. I noticed that the talent category was cut tremendously, but I'm pleased to see that Work Keys is still in there. I noticed in the beginning of your presentation, you referenced Kilgore College and some others. So are you going to work a little closer with those entities with the, within the Work Keys program?
Yes.
Because I know it's been pretty successful.
Yes, ma'am, we are. In fact, in our meeting with, with Dr. Kays, say there's kind of a disconnect, she really wants to be included, and what I intend to do is maybe start having some monthly luncheons or breakfast meetings, get her included with companies so she can determine from them what the needs are of training that workforce. And I know Dr. Fowler is the same way. So we're going to set up some meetings with these industries and get them more involved, as well as the school district, you know, with things like career tech and dual credit. It doesn't, you know, a lot of these kids now are going in with college credit, it doesn't make sense to duplicate the efforts, you know. And tell people, or I hear it all the time, Longview's a small town. Well, you have to understand, I come from a small town, $24,000. Longview's a big city, but I guess by the scale of Texas, it maybe is a small town, but it's still limited resources, no matter where you go. Dallas, DC, or Longview, it's still, there's still limited resources. So we try to work together cooperatively, create those partnerships which are critical in economic development, and make the best you can.
Very good, thank you. Well, I'm just glad to see that that's still in there.
Yes, ma'am.
Good job, thank you for your presentation.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Any other, any other discussion, Council?
I would like to just make one comment. Wayne, thank you for your presentation, but, and please understand where this is coming. We owe a great deal of thanks to Peggy Vaughn and to the whole Leadco Board and to David Willard, who has been sitting in as our interim while we were searching for you. And I can tell you that it's, it's been a tough job for David to do both things, and we appreciate the job he's done. And Peggy and the, and the staff and the group at Leadco have virtually been a year now in, in office with really no economic development head. And so you all have done an amazing job, and I just want the citizens of Longview to realize that's where this comes from. Wayne, next year it's on you. So you got, you got big shoes to fill, my friend.
No pressure, no pressure.
But David, thank you for your time, and you never once complained about it, you never once called me and said, "What were you thinking?" You never once took the easy way out, and we appreciate your dedication to this community, and it shows because we are seeing the fruits of these labors pay off every single day. So thank you all very much.
Mayor, if I could, if I would add, the Leadco Board, these are made up, this board's made up of business people, and there are no agendas other than helping this, this community grow and develop. And they bring a business perspective to the table, which I truly appreciate.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. We will not consider a resolution adopting the five-year CIP program. Mr. Bradley.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council, Council members. If I can figure out how to work this mouse. Okay. Our capital improvement program for next year, this is our general slide, this is our CIP is based on policies for, policies that were adopted by Council in 2000. Typically, CIP projects are defined as acquisition of land for public use, construction of a facility or an addition or extension, major repairs of $100,000 or more, major equipment purchase of $100,000 or more, and studies or projects for master plans. This is a slide that tells you how we try to prioritize them based on public need, public priority, urgency. Lowest scores mean more importance, so down here at the bottom, essential is number one, number four is deferable, so we just use those two scores as a ranking system to weed out what's most important and what's not important. We use a lot of documents, plans, input from, from you all to develop this, but these are the, the major documents, the comprehensive plan, master plans from water, drainage, parks. We use a Text dot bridge inspection that they do every two years. Also, the Metropolitan Transportation Plan. There's, there's other plans that are out there. One tonight we'll be talking about is the Arboretum Master Plan. And then, of course, previous CIP list, we make the CIP for five years, so we continue to use that. This is the list from last year. Most of these are in design. The Signal at Eastman and Fourth is under construction, and I believe the 2275 utility adjustments, they are complete, that's been accepted, so. That was last year for 4.8 million. This next fiscal year, I'll start off with drainage. These are based on repetitive home flooding issues that have been identified. We've got two homes that are affected, it's just going to be one project, but at Wesley and then Eva Court, we have twenty, a quarter of a million set aside for that. That's the location, Eva Court is down there by I-20, and Wesley is almost at the far north end of town, so not a lot of money for that this year. That's funded through our quarter cent sales tax. That was our drainage. Our parks, you know, project for this year, we've got two of those, Guthrie Trail Extension. This is between Cargill and Aiken Park. Actually, it's between Delwood and Fourth, but we have 1.9 million for a hike and bike trail connection. It's got pedestrian bridges, some traffic control. The other one is the Arboretum Walking Trails. This is a, a grant that came from Texas Wildlife, Texas Park and Wildlife, approximately 4,000 feet of walking trail. That doesn't show up very well, but that's the trail that goes through city on the property between Fourth and Delwood. We have a park at, south of Delwood, that's Aiken, and then up at Fourth Street where Cargill begins. This is the portion of the Arboretum that's been funded by the Texas Park and Wildlife. It's only a small portion of the entire Arboretum. They've got several phases in the Arboretum that's coming from the Arboretum Committee as well as the Arboretum Master Plan. The funding for that, 4B, that's Leadco, that's 1.9 million that the previous speaker just spoke about. $200,000 comes from Parks and Wildlife and $50,000 from local funds, that's from parks. So we're, we're cooperating with three different sources on that, on those projects. Our facility projects for this year, we have multimodal transportation facility improvements, approximately 1.4 million dollars. A large part of that this year is going to be the design and the acquisition of the land to do that, but it's pretty much constructing a transfer center. It's mostly pavement. The other one is a master plan for the convention center, the rodeo grounds, parking exhibition facilities out there, $100,000 for that. This is a hard slide, I'm sorry for that. If I had a pointer, the, the bus terminal that's shown, this is the transit facility, multimodal transportation facility. The train depot is up at the top, the existing one, that's been worked on several times. There it is. Great. But just, yeah, okay, you're working. Okay, this is another one that's a grant. This is, and, and thanks to Mr. Scott Lewis and the people that do the Transit Master Plan. He's already, the entrance was done this previous year, that was done with a grant, and approximately a quarter of a million dollars. But he's got a program to go and make improvements in stages. So if you go where the existing Longview Transit Building is, and then go to the right, the concourse, that is a bus concourse for the buses to come in and park, that's what this one is primarily about. There's a piece of property that's outlined with, over here on the right, that has to be purchased, there's a building that has to be torn down, so there's demolition cost. And then, of course, the parking and utility, but a lot of, a lot of pavement involved with the concourse there. Now, the, the parking that's up in the northeast corner, I'm sorry, I'm oriented by maps, to the right and up, there is other parking that's a part of a next phase. I don't know if we're going to get a grant for that or not, but the 1.4 million is all part of a grant that the Transit Department got. For our master plan at the Mud Cobb Facility, the, and the grounds, we were proposing to use the hotel occupancy tax, approximately $100,000. And then the other one is a transit grant that's administered through Text Dot for 1.4 Transportation projects, street projects, Hawkins Parkway and Eastman Intersection improvements, that's the section of street leading into the theater and Target, that's new pavement, safety improvements, that's been long overdue. That's the location, if anybody's unsure of where that is. That's fixing the dip out there. And that's Regional Mobile Authority. Part of that will be funded with a grant from Regional Mobile Authority. Onto our utility projects, we have a part of our regular line replacement and maintenance, our operation and maintenance. We have two lines that have been identified in our wastewater master plan to be replaced. It's along Guthrie Creek and LaFamo Creek. I'll show you on the map instead of read those streets. Our major project for this year is, that has been undertaken by Text Dot and has, I believe it just cleared the, the, it was just given a public meeting for the environmental report. They have six months to approve that, but Harrison Road or Farm to Market 2206 from Loop 281 to Fisher Road, that's to be widened from a current two-lane urban section to a four-lane, I'm sorry, five-lane urban, it's going rural to urban. But we have to move our utilities. Part of it is, part of these utilities are in land that this, the city already owns, so Text Dot has to reimburse us for that, but the full value of the project is the 2.6 million, and this is just for the sewer. These are the locations, the sewer lines, Tempe to Huey along Guthrie Creek, LaFamo is Pine Tree to Brandon Street. And then that's section along Harrison Road is where the utilities have to be relocated and where Text Dot is planning in two years to do that widening project. Those are the costs associated. That's the total, as I said, those are coming from our operation maintenance budget and CIP reserve fund. Water, our water projects for next year, our, as I, our line replacement program, we have several locations, Airline, Jarvis, Woodplace, LaDuke, Marion, and Diane. These are lines that are either undersized or beyond their maintenance life. We broke out water separately since that's a different revenue source, but the utility adjustments on Harrison Road, that also includes 2.7 million dollars for the water. In addition to those two projects, we also have two plant projects at Cherokee Water Treatment Plant. The first one is the Upflow Clarifier. That is time, it is time to replace- That is time, it is time to replace that. It's, this is to rehabilitate that. It's 4.3 million. In conjunction with that, we're going to replace the plant filter media. There's 10 filters there. It's approximately $650,000 based on our engineer estimate, and it is also beyond its useful life. That's a screenshot of where the Upflow Clarifier is. On the right, there's other clarifiers at the treatment plant, but this one clarifier handles 50% of our capacity there. It's been in service for approximately 50 years. It's 20 years beyond replacement. It's in its time. The filters are in the center. There's 10 filters out there, down a little bit lower. And that's just filter media. It's anthracite coal, and it helps purify the water. These are the locations of the line replacement projects as well as the one on Harrison Road. Total water funds that are required for next year, 8.59 million. That's, will be funded from the operations and maintenance and CIP reserve fund. This is a summary of those 12 projects, approximately 16.6 million. Utilities are up there at the top. The rest are after that. Are there any questions on the CIP projects?
Any question for Mr. Bradley?
Yes. Go ahead. Mr. Bradley, for the out years, does staff regularly update the cost estimates? I know they're, they need to be accurate for year one, but for years two through five, do you regularly factor in cost increases?
We will, what we do is we have an annual review. It's the staff from Parks, Facilities, Water Treatment Plant in this case. A lot of the numbers come from studies or reports or the master plans. So we'll look at them and need to, we'll bring them up to date as necessary. I'm not going to say that for year five that we put a lot of time in it because we are going to make the focus on these. But we do have an annual review, and I believe that for, like our Parks and Facilities, we're probably a whole lot better off than we are for utilities because with utilities, we have a source of funds. So we kind of look forward to projects like this clarifier.
And speaking of source of funds for, again, years two through five, does staff look at potential sources of funding for some of those outlying projects?
I would have to say not really because, as I said, with drainage and utilities, we have a source of funds and they pay for most of the water and sewer. But for the transportation, I think for those that have been around a long time, some of those projects have been on there for quite a while, so.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Wright?
Mr. Bradley, a couple of questions. The $4 million from last year that I guess we haven't used yet, that on some of, or you have projects still left over from last year, there's about $4 million, I think you said it at the beginning of your presentation. Is that $4 million available already? I mean, that's, that hasn't been spent yet and it's set aside for those projects?
It's set aside. It's earmarked. There were two projects that were complete and most of the other ones are in design.
So we're not going to have to go to this year's general funds to get that $4 million?
Money's already set aside. And part of our process for when we do the CIP is we have to go through with finance, that was another department that's, they're not even on there, but we have to go through finance and say, do our books balance with your books? And if they don't, then we're the ones that are wrong, so we got to come up with that. But we do have to, you know, verify those funds and set them aside and we go through that exercise.
Okay. Now, on the two FM 2206 where we're going to, I guess, move the water in the sewer, that's something that the state is doing. Is that correct? They're widening that road, that highway? Is that something that we went to the state and asked, would you widen this highway? Or is this something the state decided it needed to be done? Or how did that come about?
Well, that would have been identified by, like our Metropolitan Planning Organization, which is in conjunction with city staff and regional cities and government as well as Texas DOT. But that's like a critical section of road between Kilgore and Longview, and that's been on their list for quite a while. So in a way, we are part of that, but in another way, we have either existing right-of-way for our utilities. And in that case, if we're not in there right-of-way, if we're on our own property, they reimburse that. So there's roughly about $2 million in those costs that will actually come back through Texas DOT as reimbursement.
So of that $5 million or so there for those two projects, we'll get about $2 million back?
Roughly, yeah. Well, we won't spend that $2 million. I'm not exactly sure how the Texas DOT does the reimbursement, but we also have to pay a portion of the right-of-way. And those right-of-way costs are more than normal because they're doing buildings, but it's done on a share basis. You know, Texas DOT will pay 90% of those costs, just as they pay 90% of our utility, and then we would pay the other 10% to participate with that.
And if we just said, Texas DOT, if you want to widen this highway, you pay for those utilities, it just wouldn't get done?
Our utilities are in there right-of-way under permit, so we're, if they want to have us move, we would have to, I guess you'd say we would have to move. It's similar to what we had on the loop in Sabine for the overpass. Unfortunately, we had a lot of utilities along that corridor. But it was, it's something that's been on the books for a long time. It was, it was one of their at-grade safety programs because of the railroad crossing. So the utility ended up paying for that, most of it. But that was at the, you know, the, I think most of that was, it was all on the city. I don't think we had any private easements.
David, to kind of expand on your question about, to Fisher Road basically, when I had the opportunity to go meet with Governor Abbott a couple of weeks ago in Austin, we discussed this exact thing and how that I feel like our area deserves a little bit of attention from Texas DOT these days because in the past, we've kind of taken a backseat to another neighboring city, granted. They've had wonderful representation with Governor Altice, and they've had the lion's share of Texas DOT funding over the last many, many years. And my, majority of my discussion with Governor Abbott was the fact that it's our turn. And so we want these funds coming our way now because we feel like we're the growing city in East Texas, and we have the need because connectivity is what helps you to grow. And if we can't connect ourselves, our growth is stifled. And so Texas DOT is going to put in $39 million to this project. We're going to put in three. I hope we're going to put in zero, but we're going to put in three. But my, my impetus was, it does no good if we just go to Fisher Road. If we don't go from Fisher Road all the way to 42, then we don't expand 42, we've done nothing.
Right.
And that's what I spoke to the governor about, and his, Texas DOT people were right there and they agreed 100%. And so what we need to do is, connectivity is the key to growth. And so if we can, of course, 42 is a challenge because 42 has a ton of active oil sites on it. So it will never be a four-lane road, but it can be a road that has four lanes in areas where people can pass and people can, the transport can be bigger between I-20 and Highway 80. And then to have an artery coming from 42 all the way to 1845 through Harrison Road, that's what connects us. And that's where I've asked for the governor's help. And I feel like it's, as I said, I feel like it's our turn. Because if you look at what's taken place in Longview over the last year, 18 months, we've had $145 million of private equity put into our community over the last 18 months in the form of restaurants, retail, hotels. That's a huge number. So I feel like we are the growing city. And so that's why the governor and I visited and we had a great discussion. And it's time for us to get the lion's share of the Texas DOT money. We've sat back and let Tyler have it for many, many years. And so we're going to, I don't know, flex our muscles if we have to because I think it's where we need to be. But that's just part of this process. If we can get that connectivity where we can then start branching out, you know, connecting 271 all the way through, those are, those are ways that we grow our community with funds that we don't have to come up with. And so that's the purpose behind this. So, but it's a great question, and you're exactly right. It is a big number for us, but when you look at if, if we could do this for $3 million on the city's standpoint and Texas DOT fits the bill for the rest of it, what a huge win. It's the way Tyler got the loop around, their third loop around Tyler. Texas DOT funded all of it, basically, and forgave a huge debt to them. So it's our turn. And so I think this is just one way where we're going to go out and try to expand our capabilities, our growth potential by what Mr. Bradley's talking about. Great question, David. Thank you for bringing that up. Ms. Williams?
Could you please clarify why we need a master plan for the convention center and the rodeo exhibit area? I know bits and pieces, but just so that I have a clear understanding of why we're investing $100,000 in that.
Yes, ma'am. We've had a couple of projects there and they've been, I would say, successful. We replaced the grandstands and we've done some pavilions and restrooms, some, I believe some parking improvements. But we've had a couple of other ones that we didn't really have a good feel on. And we got, I mean, we, you may remember it, but we wanted to do some paving improvements out there and it didn't work out in terms of, when we got bids, it was way too much. We had, we had a lot of issues just trying to tie everything together. And, you know, in discussions, it was brought up that maybe we need to be looking at everything, you know, and trying to put together a game plan instead of just, it just, sometimes it seems like we go to our facilities and we take care of them last. And we do have a facilities study for all the, the city of Longview, I'm sorry, a master plan for our facilities in our comp plan. And I believe that one's identified at 150,000, so it's not that one, but it's, it is focusing on the convention center as well as the grounds there. And what can we do now that we're getting some revenue stream from a source that we didn't have a couple of years ago? Obviously, that goes to other places, but to look at those other sources of income to try and address that.
So is it more about utilities and drainage? Is that what you're talking about, speaking in terms of like in order to be able to do that pavement? Because I remember the improvements that we voted on. I believe we took that out of the general fund, didn't we, some of that? We did it as a CIP project for the restrooms.
We had a design project. We've actually had two design projects out there that never made it to construction.
Got it. Okay.
The restaurants came from the hotel, motel occupancy tax, didn't they? The million dollars?
Yeah, yeah.
Came from the fund.
That's right. Thank you.
And to add one thing, the multimodal facility, they've got their, they've got their master plan and they're working it.
Oh, yeah, I'm well aware.
The arboretum. And there's so many of them, I don't know, I don't know all of them, but.
Well, I'll leave you with this, and I said it last year. Don't forget about the parks. Mr. Karen, please don't forget about the parks because we have so much going on. We're so grateful to have the huge investment from LEEDCO in our trail systems, but representing one of the oldest areas of towns, our parks need help. So I would like for staff to really look at that as well as we continue to move forward. And I know how CIP works and I know it's a lot of times budget-driven, but just please continue to look at that aspect.
I agree with that, Ms. Williams, because that's part of, once again, part of the comprehensive plan.
Yes.
To not only complete your park, but upgrade the existing parks that we have. And I think, you know me, I'm a parks guy. You know that. And so it's, it is very apropos that you bring that up, and we will certainly make it a priority. It needs to be.
Thank you.
Mr. Moore, do you have something?
Just a couple of general comments. I think we can all agree that the CIP is a major part of implementing our comprehensive plan in the near term. We recently expanded the comprehensive plan advisory committee to 15 members to broaden the representation in the community. I like to ask maybe that the comprehensive plan advisory committee get involved in the process, particularly looking at these out years, looking at potential sources of funding for some of these where the source isn't already identified. Maybe look at the priorities vis-à-vis the 27 priorities that are identified in the comprehensive plan. I'd like, you know, Ms. Williams and Ms. Ishihara's committee to just take a look and review it.
It's never too early to start looking for funding. You're right.
Yes, sir.
I agree, Councilman. And I will add this as well. That's very, that's staff-driven, too. Staff has to take some initiative in helping us to secure those funds that are out there. So please continue to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. You have the discussion.
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Bradley. Appreciate your presentation. We're now to items of community interest. Mr. Moore?
I am the council liaison to the Historic Preservation Commission here in Longview and would like to invite everybody to a historical marker workshop being put on by RP and Z Department and the Gregg County Historical Commission, Saturday, September 17th at 10:00 a.m. at our Development Services Office. If you've ever wanted to know how you might be able to procure a historical marker, this would be the place to be. On that Saturday, they have assured me that this workshop will be concluded in time for the afternoon college football games. And a second item of historical note, that 50 years ago tonight, September 8th, 1966, Star Trek premiered on NBC.
Wow.
Live long and prosper.
Yes. Ms. Snoddy?
Good evening, everyone. Speaking of parks and the importance thereof, I would like to thank everyone who came out this past Saturday to my second annual CPR celebration. It was an awesome day, great weather, even greater people out there. Also, I would like to thank city staff who assisted in helping making the day a success. And a special shout-out, Scott to Will, who was out there in the park. He was very helpful in helping me with getting last-minute things done. So thank you, guys, chiefs, both chiefs. Looking forward to it again next year. Thank you.
Ms. Williams?
Congratulations on National Night Out. It was a blast, chief and chief. We had a good time. Ms. Ariza, I just wanted to say this to you. I believe in green building spaces and green building materials, and I pray that our community will eventually get to that point of understanding what true sustainability is. So thank you for your comments today, each one to each one on that. On September 13th and 14th, there will be a sweep in District 3. We will be doing a sweep. Thank you to Mr. Shirley and his staff, Ms. Choi for getting that organized. Everyone will be there, our police, our fire, encouraging all neighborhood residents to come out, bring everything, I guess, that you want to get rid of. We're going to meet at 9:00 a.m. at the southeast corner of Mobberly and Bert's Home. This is a targeted revitalization neighborhood sweep. So I plan to be out there, but if it's really hot, I might have to sit down, okay? Diva's got to sit a little bit. But anyway, thank you, staff, for that. Looking forward to that and I hope everybody had a great Labor Day.
Ms. Ishihara's not here. Can we?
Move to approve, Councilmember Kristin Ishihara.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Wright?
Yes, I had a citizen ask me to talk, tell the Utilities Department about that. I guess the utilities, Dwayne. One of my friends was in a funeral procession here a couple of weeks ago going down Silver Falls Road, and he, they passed a truck, there was a vacuum truck that was cleaning out some, one of the, some of the systems. I don't know exactly what. Anyway, they were coming by and the crew stopped and stood and was quiet while the procession passed. And he said that he was really impressed with the whole thing, and the family of the deceased person was really impressed and was, wanted to thank you and your crew. deceased person was really impressed and was, wanted to thank you and your crew for doing that.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Pirtle?
I want to thank Michael Shirley and Lauren Hill and Angela Choi and Shannon. They've all had some dealings with me this last week on some issues that have cropped up around here. And also Mark Savassa, he is a big help to this community. I've come to really like the man. And he is very proactive and he is, he's taken the reins on a lot of issues that Michael has given him the reins on. And I've learned to appreciate the Mellow Mill Services Group around here a whole lot from what's going on here. I think it's a real positive thing that they're doing and they're really trying to get the developers in this town involved in a lot of things. And I think they're headed in the right direction for us.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Willard?
Nothing.
Welcome back, by the way.
Thank you.
Nice to have you back.
Thank you.
District 4 Town Hall meeting will be hosted by Kristen Ishihara on Tuesday, September 13th at 6:00 p.m. at the Arabella of Longview on 1133 East Hawkins Parkway. Partners in Prevention will be hosting a new mentor training for the Forever Friends and Co-Pilots Program on September 23rd. If you're interested in becoming a mentor to a child, please call Cindy Graham at 903-237-1015 to learn more and register for the training session. Downtown Lives returning to Heritage Plaza this fall. After a very successful spring series, the 100 Acres of Heritage Board is expanding the event to include seven weeks in September and October. The Free Concert Series kicks off on September 9th, which is tomorrow, with musician Levi Kitchen. September 16th, the Dag Navid, and September 23rd is the Cody Wayne Band. So thank you to 100 Acres of Heritage Board. That has been a very successful event in Longview. We appreciate that very much. Also, don't forget to visit our website to get your event placed on our calendar. Also, I want to, upcoming events that are on our calendars, you can see, Gregg County Fair, Longview WOW, the Longview Museum, the Ambucks, Landmarks of Longview Tour, Battle of Fort Crawford Heritage Festival, 2016, Tony McCoy and Friends, Angel Network, plus many, many more. So please get involved with that calendar so your event can be placed up here so people will know where to go and when to go and won't duplicate efforts. An update on the Go-Giver Fund and the swings. We have continued to receive donations. I want to thank Mr. Wright for his donation. I want to thank our former mayor, Murray Moore, for his donation. And many others have sent donations in and we are to the point where Mr. Karen is now moving forward with this project. We will be implementing and designing and purchasing these swings and we will start construction as soon as possible in each district. So citizens of Longview, thank you very much for a successful project here that we will be very proud of when this comes to fruition. So thank you all for caring enough to help those that need your helping hand. Let's see, what's next? Survey. Okay, this is interesting. A little over a year ago, I asked this same survey question. Thought it'd be good to contrast and ask the question again to see if your concern is still the same as it were a year ago. So here it is. What issues do you feel are most pressing in Longview? Rank in order of importance, with one being the item you feel most pressing, two being the next most pressing, and so on. Our survey in 2015, do you remember what the number one thing was in 2015? Well, gee, there it is. Attracting new business to Longview, followed by, closely by public safety, which was obviously a very big concern. This year, as the survey came out, we had a great response once again. And believe it or not, it did not stay the same. Public safety flip-flopped to number one, which we would expect, and number two is attracting new business to Longview, which we also want and would expect. So what this tells me, and we'll go on the rest of them, we'll see as you go, but what this tells me is that our community is pretty consistent. We want to be safe and we want to grow. And you know, one cannot happen without the other. So those two are going to go hand in hand throughout this whole process. So we want to continue to do what we can to make our community safe, to protect our citizens, and then in essence, we will continue to grow as we have been. And so I appreciate the efforts of all involved, especially police and fire, all that you guys do. Your dedication to us every day is showing in our community. And I also want to thank the citizens of Longview for participating because your input, once again, is invaluable. And it's, it's nice to see that we, we are remaining somewhat consistent in that, the fact that these two are the most pressing issues and we're continuing to address those as a council and as a community. So thank you very much. Second question. If you could choose only one fantasy football team to start your team, who would you pick?
Cam.
Who?
Cam.
Cam. How'd I know that? How'd I know that? Actually, Des Brown, number one.
I have his jersey.
Those are some, okay. And I just want to clarify something for you. All of you all that take the survey, I really appreciate you taking the survey. I get some, some interesting comments because there's always an other and the other, some of them are, I think you all missed, some of you all missed the point. This is a fun question. It's not really meant to do anything with the city. It's just a fun, I always ask one serious, leading question that we want to have an answer to. The other one is always a fun question. So don't think I'm mixing this with the importance of public safety and growing our community with businesses. Because I get answers like, who cares about fantasy football? I don't want crime to go down, okay? It's not the point. These aren't an if and or question. So one's serious, one is fun. So take it fun, enjoy and participate. I appreciate the participation. Okay. Book club. Here we are, gang. We have a video tonight, quick on the Sabbath. You know, I have a friend, and for all intents and purposes, he should be one justified to complain. He's changed his busy and active life of health for a life confined to a wheelchair. Except in his case, a wheelchair doesn't really confine him. This man lives life in a way that many of us would never have the courage to take on. He snow skis, water skis, travels all over the country and has a successful career. How would you handle life if without warning, tomorrow you were confined to a wheelchair? You see, my friend has realized and spoken to me through his actions that life is what you make it. You can make it one of feeling sorry for yourself or one in which you live your life, whatever that may be, with gusto. One of my favorite quotes is, "When I stand before God at the end of my life, I would hope that I would not have a single bit of talent left and could say, 'I used everything you gave me.'" Anyone seeing in this audience that would be my friend? Ken Carter. I'm sorry that I used you, Ken, without asking you, but I, it is what it is. This really struck me because this part of the book is where we talk about adversity. And how do you handle adversity? Are you going to, and once again, be the goldfish waiting for someone to feed you? Are you going to be the shark out there taking life by the horns and doing what you can do to improve? And so very, very pertinent part of this, this very short, concise book. But it has significant meaning because it defines what you are and who you are and how you react to certain things. And so it's, it's humbling when I think of the things that I complain about. It's embarrassing when I think of the things that I consider obstacles in my life. Because really, none of us in this room have obstacles. We're blessed to live in a wonderful city, a great country. And so I have to force myself to recognize this on a daily basis. And it has helped me to hopefully become a happier, easier person to be around. Kelly's not jumping up and down back there, is she? Please don't, honey. Because it is, it is important that you, you realize every day, in the blink of an eye, things can change. And if they do, how are you going to handle that? And that's what this whole chapter is about. So questions, comments, discussions, council?
You know, I think on a bigger picture, this, this community has been through some bad times. I mean, sales tax, the economy, unemployment. But our community's been proactive. We haven't buried our head in the sand and said, oh my, oh my, what are we going to do? The bond rating agencies, we presented that proactive picture to them and they gave us the benefit of the doubt. They, they left our bond rating AA+ and I think that's a testament to not letting bad things just bring us down.
You know, Ed, when I pick these books, I always try to pick something that, number one, will be pertinent internally, but also something that our, our community can grasp and our community can say, hey, let's apply this. Because you're right, we could, we, like any community, have had some obstacles. And are you going to jump over that hurdle or lay down underneath that hurdle? We're jumping over those hurdles in Longview and we're, and we're showing the fact that we're not going to let things get us down. And it's that, starting with that very first book, it's that positive effect, the positive energy that we, we present, which trickles out like the rock in the pond. And those ripple effects continue to go through our city and I think we're seeing that. You're right, Ed, we could have gone to the bond rating agency and said, gloom and doom, petroleum's down, oil and gas is down, we're having layoffs. But we didn't. Exactly right. So, you know, who knows? Maybe these little books do change things one person at a time. I know what it has to mean. Anyone else? Very good. Thank you for participating. With that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you for being here.